Good evening, everyone, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular council meeting in City Lackawanna, July 12th, 2021. Normally, we would begin our caucus at 6:30, as we will with the next regular meeting, or any subsequent special meetings from this point on. But because everyone, most people are familiar with the Zoom format that we've been using, where we began our caucus at 7 o'clock, we decided to maintain that format for this meeting alone. Any members of the public, if you are requesting time to speak and address the council, we would ask that you sign in with your name and address. If not, then I would ask everyone to rise for the political allegiance.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's good to see all the council members, department heads, and having everyone under the same roof and in the same room again. What was it, a year and a half? Tough, very difficult times, but at least there's light at the end of the tunnel now. Getting on with the caucus. Mr. City Clerk, any hearings from citizens?
The hearings from citizens have been added to the communication portion at the bottom of the agenda.
Very good. First is administrative matters, approval minutes, communications from city comptroller, city clerk, and city treasurer. Moving to item number six, from the city comptroller, request city council approve attached standard workday resolution form as required by New York State Local Retirement System. Anyone have any questions of our city comptroller on that item number six? Caroline, do you want to add on that?
All I wanted to add was the deputy clerk position was omitted from the resolution that was passed last time, so I just had to add one more.
Good, thank you. Item number seven, DPW Commissioner, request city council approve city line, county, excuse me, county limestone as the selected contractor offer the county bid list to middle pavement stripe Ridge Road with a contingency based on the city attorney approving a final contract. Cost is projected at approximately $800,000. Anyone have any questions on that?
Mr. Council President?
Yes, sir.
So, is the city attorney approving the contract? That's what it says here. Are we just, is he just going to approve the language of the contract?
Correct. Well, that's normally what he does, absolutely, but it will say he's approving the contract. Well, regardless of what it says, you know what the format is, you know what the procedure is. The city attorney reviews it, and if he okay's it, then we are, non pro tankas, as they say in Klingon, approving that contract.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Item number eight, DPW Commissioner, request.
Yes, sir. I see that Mr. Havens has joined us. Jason, welcome, and congratulations on your engagement.
Thank you.
As for Mr. DeSantis, Mr. Havens being in the same room, I have a question. When will, once we move on this today, what will be the timeframe for the payment?
County lines looking at somewhere between three and four weeks at the latest. It's just shuffling around some of their existing schedule.
Very good. And it's my understanding the preliminary cost is $850,000. That's correct.
It's good, because the county sewers aren't finished with their work in Ridge Road yet either, so they still have another week and a half to go.
They're going to raise them?
Well, they're, no, our contractors are going to raise them. They're doing, they're replacing some lines.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Item number eight, DPW Commissioner, request city council approve precious 2022 Ford F-250 XL super cat total cost $39,150, $25,000. The price is from the 2122 city budget, remainder would paid out of three county snow removal fund. Anyone have any questions or any comments on item number eight? Moving on to item number nine, Director Recreation, request city council approve waiving his permit fees for any food truck vendors that were farm-fresh.
We lost the line in there.
To say something's missing. It goes on, says the Director Laxall believes that the presence of food trucks will enhance the enjoyment of this community. Does anyone have any issues or questions on item number nine?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We, food trucks, we're using food, we said we were using food trucks because of thinking in hand, I remember when we used to do the festival, we had people from the community, you know, that participated and stuff, and it seemed like it was much better because the people from the community, they made the money, they brought more families and whatever. We don't charge like, what, $25 for one event?
$50.
$50 for the whole year, right?
Right.
But it's $25 for one event. So I don't understand why we would have to waive, because I just want to take the buck, so they charge $700, you know?
Well, I think we're trying to make it enjoyable for everybody and keep the cost down, so that the people who visit and pay for paid food trucks for products can afford to pay.
But my question is, if they get $50, $50 for the whole year, so how do $50 stop them from, you know, whatever? And why isn't that, we have vendors here, like the restaurants here, maybe they want to participate in doing stuff in there. Do you shout to them? Because I remember when we had it one time before, we actually had food truck that was blocking Broadway bobbies and curlies and stuff like that.
That was during the lunch breaks, that's correct. But I think this is something that Director Laxall is something trying to start new. The first one's always the worst one, and I understand what you're saying, John, but I also applaud Brian on his initiative on making it so that everyone can enjoy it.
Director Laxall, perhaps a conversation with us on this topic, and if you can give us some of your thoughts once we have that, maybe we could table this till the next meeting?
The concert series starts this week, right?
It starts before the next meeting. I mean, just to address what Mr. Ingram has brought up, in the future, local vendors would be something that I think would be beneficial and desirable for everyone. This particular outfit that I chose for two kind of trial runs at our, two of our five concerts, is basically just that, just to see what the response from the community is. Is this something that is going to be successful? It's kind of an experiment. I've seen it work at other places, thought maybe it could enhance our event as well, you know, bring more options to the members of our community that enjoy the concerts. Yeah, it is no reason we can't expand it to within the city in the future. I mean, you could vote however you see fit. If you think that the $50 waiver fee is not reasonable, then I'm not going to hold it against anybody to vote their conscience. I was led to believe that that was a past practice, that's why I brought it up in this instance, so.
And something like that would give us an opportunity to weigh all that. I didn't know if it was a past practice or not, and I don't know if there are other events where people had to pay that fee, or vendors had to pay that fee, or waiving at this particular instance, but let me ask you this. If there are five concert programs that are scheduled, are these vendors scheduled to be at all?
No, we only have them scheduled for two events, and it's kind of just an experiment at this point, just to kind of gauge, I don't really want to book food vendors for each concert when, I don't know what the response is going to be. This is, you know, kind of flying by the seat of my pants on this decision, thought it might enhance it, and we'll, you know, kind of play it by ear from there. You know, this is the kind of thing where I don't know that I'll make a decision on the other three concerts this year, but going forward in years to come, it'll give us kind of a blueprint on what worked and what didn't work. I'm just looking to figure out ways to enhance the enjoyment.
And along that same line, did this vendor or another vendor raise an objection to that fee at all in your discussions with them?
They didn't, no. Again, I mentioned that it apparently has been past practice. I've been speaking with the city clerk, he had informed me that it had been past practice, that this fee has been waived in the past. I didn't, you know, make that any sort of a guarantee, obviously, but.
Well, if it's an experiment, suppose we propose something like this, that for the first concert, we waive that $25 fee, or whatever it is, and if there is enough interest and enough business generated, then we might consider not waiving it for the future, or if it's a key component and it's pivotal, maybe we could consider it based on what the results are in the future.
Whatever the council deems appropriate is fine with me. If we waive the fee for the first one, I believe their second date of availability will fall after our next council meeting, so I could approach the subject with them, and we could have a resolution at the next council meeting before the second, you know, potential event for them to be booked for occurs.
So would you consider maybe a waiver for the one event only to be reconsidered at the next council meeting?
Certainly.
Something to think about.
Sure. I also want to say, I've seen food trucks at our festivals, and they packed up and left at times because there was no business.
Yeah.
And so I appreciate the initiative, trying to do something different. The summer series has been tremendous throughout the years. As a matter of fact, last year, we had that one concert, and I was really touched by it because it seemed like we're getting back to normal. There was a concert there, and it really felt good to see people laughing, having a few cocktails, and just really enjoying themselves, but this is a new initiative, and I think it's going to add to the, no pun intended, but add to the flavor of the event. Okay, there was a pun intended, sorry.
And on another note, not to distract from the issue at hand, Brian, again, you're to be congratulated along with Linda Ziber on the event that was, that you guys pull off on the weekend at the Veterans Stadium. My understanding, I couldn't make it personally, but my understanding it was very successful, and congratulations again on that.
While I.
Please pass our congratulations on Linda and her efforts.
Well, I thank you personally, I have to say publicly, Linda Ziber did 90% of the heavy lifting on that. That was a youth board run event, and she, she has a flair for it, so I'm happy to give her whatever assistance she were, you know, she asks of me, but again, she really did the heavy lifting, and she's the one to be commended.
Well, we're all very appreciative of it. Anyone else have any issues, anything else we want to correct?
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Council, didn't we waive fees last year for the events at Sunny Brez, Vans, Steves, and all that?
What we did, what Brian's referring to, and he said he referenced me, is in the past, when we had the festival, past recreation directors were trying to get some food trucks in, as Councilman Samansky alluded to, they were leaving, and they didn't even pay. And the idea was to try to, try to.
But they're not making any money, they're not going to stay.
Exactly right, and we all know that I think the general public prefers to have options and have the food trucks there, so the thought was we could get it to them for free, at least initially, let this thing kind of build a little bit of a following, and then, I mean, if a food truck's doing okay, they're not going to mind paying twice a month.
Right.
But we're just trying to give them not any, we're just trying not to make any reasons, not to compensate.
Right.
So, that's the gist of the thought process. But your question, Councilman, certainly, yeah, we did have other events that we waived. We kind of do it based on need, so.
Right. Last year, we're trying times too.
But I think in the language it has been, we do this specific event, because we don't want the food trucks thinking they've got carpooling license and have to drive around the city, you know, without a license.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on to item number 10, city attorney requests city council approve resolution assigning a public round of street number. Mr. Judah, anything you want to?
No, this is just, it's for the soccer, mini pitch soccer program, we need electric there. Niagara Mohawk requests a street address in order to set up a meter, so just go and follow in their formalities.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or issues to address on that? Item number 11, city clerk request city council approve, that resolution rescinding 19-2020 and reestablishing council chambers as the venue for council meetings. Any, anyone have any issues on that?
We just need your language on that. Today, we're taking.
He had the Klingon, that councilman, Samansky referred to. Yeah, we'll do that.
Klingon land.
All right, communications from citizens, Ted Smalls, some communication regarding current condition of road striking on Ridge Road between Route 5 and South Park, indicating that just, and lines are faded, et cetera, et cetera. We're well aware of that, and that's going to be remedied soon, right, Jason?
Right.
So, that's in the works, this is sort of the better. We couldn't agree with Mr. Smalls any more firmly. Anyone else have anything they want to address on that?
Council President, is there any way, do you mean you could send him an email or something, letting him know what's going on, that's going to be taken care of in the next couple of months, you know, it'll be, everything's going to be brand new, and hopefully awesome. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number 13, Mr. Langgo, some communication regarding following concerns at various locations in the city at the road, repair under underpasses, railroad crossings, and Martin need a repair railroad property, Mariner, Martin, Spokes Creek need cleaned up. Commissioner Public Works, DeSantis, anything on that?
Well, the railroads been notified, you know, about the situation numerous times. We're not allowed anywhere near their property. They're well aware of Willett and Martin Road, the railroad tracks, they'll ban the air over there, and also the debris and growth along the tracks. So we can only notify them, I mean, we have no control of forcing them to do anything. So, I would say the people along it in those neighborhoods, call it, call that number and complain. People to call me, they'll do something about it.
Is there a communication number?
I'd also recommend Ken, Ken, David, James, since he's on the transportation committee, you know, we can all attest that the railroads are one of the least responsive organizations on planet earth. They don't really have to answer anyone, so they don't, but when we ever had an issue, we would contact James and Higgins to try to put some heat behind them, because they were very networked on many of their properties. That's River Road, Tony, that's a county road, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Willett, Willett, the tracks go over Martin, Willett, that's the same tracks that run along Mariner?
Yeah.
I think, pretty sure that's what your complaint is about. But the underpass on Haber Road, yes, that's a county road.
All right, anyone else? Along those same lines, our city clerk, I have a suggestion that the communication contact information that was submitted by Director Stanton be included in the minutes of this meeting, so that people reading the minutes can familiarize themselves with the contact information. Anyone else on item 13?
Yes, I've been at Mr. Langgo's house many times. Actually, I was his paper boy 55 years ago. He was on Mariner, I grew up on Mariner, we've had numerous problems with the railroad behind there, parking tankers, truck, the tanker cars back there, so I think we have to do something if the councils are submitting letters or resolutions or something to the railroad, to Higgins, maybe to Kennedy's office. Senator Kennedy helped us out the last time.
We did press conference.
Otherwise, nothing's going to get done there, huh? Pardon?
I said we had a press conference on St. Jude, and some was back there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where was it?
So, I don't know, we'll do something at the next meeting, but otherwise, this is going to continue, I feel. They are parking tankers again, past Martin Road, if you go down Lake Avenue, look to the right, and the rail tracks are there, there's tankers there again, but that's where they're putting them. Also, this, this underpass, it's been a disrepair all my life, you know, we've always had problems with that. It seems like they dig it up, and then they repair it, and they do it half-assed, and is there something we could do or call them, or, you know, demand them doing something about it, you know, especially with the football season coming, you got a lot of traffic there, and it is bumpy.
I don't know about demand, but I mean, suggest, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, I've talked to.
It's better than it was, it used to get flooded all the time.
Bill Gary is commissioner for DPW, and they know about it, so.
Yeah.
Along those lines, again, our city clerk, much appreciative of his efforts, suggested we, at the appropriate time, move for a resolution directed in the Hall Department to direct, to prepare a resolution directed at resolving this issue, and communicating with the appropriate parties, including the railroad, as a city council. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
Good for that you suggested, right? Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item number 14, Denise Abbott, ASL, request city council approve plans to utilize small, Lackawanna City Streets for later day trade Monday, September 6th. Anyone have any comments on that?
We don't know the route yet, do we? We do, we do submit this agenda. It's on Dorance Avenue, very small portion where they have the stage, and then immediately goes to the traffic circle east of where they will, I'm sorry, west of where they will be staging, right at the south of them, so they're going to be on our way to the football field.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, very good. Long as they get off this year, they've been training us for numerous years, and weather or something has always hindered it.
All right, anyone else? Item 14, moving on to item 15, city attorney request, city council remove item number 15, favor right, we're going to act on same transferring property located at 114, 116 Center Street to the LHDC. Along those lines, I would like to extend a sincere thanks to Lauren Jednick from the Development Corporation. She has put together a comprehensive letter indicating how this all works, the transfer of the properties, and the building and construction of the housing units, transfer, the sale of housing units, and the maintenance of certain rental income properties on a tax-accepted basis that helps fund the LHDC, and like to thank her for those efforts, it clears up a substantial amount of, a number of questions that I had in my mind, and I would ask Chuck Clark that perhaps that letter be included in our website, so that the public gets a chance to read this, and they can become familiar with how this whole process works and eventually unfolds as it involves the Development Corporation. Anyone have any issues or comments on item 15?
Well, last meeting, you brought up some interesting points, and where your points addressed by Lauren regarding the tax situation.
That's my understanding, according to her letter, it is a tax exempt. Yeah, and I believe, in fact, Councilman, you may have mentioned what the last meeting that under not-for-profits under other circumstances, if it's income property, then it does result in a taxation event. Director Stanton, or Mr. Judah, if you want to?
So, Executive Director Lauren Jednick couldn't make the meeting, but she is available. If I, if she has, if you have any questions, I can text those to her, she's watching tonight. However, she has indicated that three of the four homes that will be built on that property will be placed at our tax rolls.
The one with the two family income that they're going to maintain and collect the rents from.
Right.
Is that in fact tax, property tax exempt?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's under a separate, okay, there's the LCDC, which is Lackawanna Community Development Corporation, and then there's the Lackawanna Housing Development Corporation. Lackawanna Housing Development Corporation owns and manages property. Lackawanna Community Development Corporation is a, is a community development corporation under New York State law. That entity is prohibited from owning and maintaining property and using, using the funds to run their day-to-day operations. In this case, the funds that they're getting from these rehab homes, or these low-income homes, is used to maintain homes, not to run their entity, so there is a difference, and it is a separate corporation.
Thank you.
And it falls within the parameters of the grant money that they get to develop these homes and rehab them through, I believe, People Inc. or Habitat for Humanity. So, and, you know, quite frankly, when I did look back, they're the only ones that are really reaching out to develop that part of Center Street. I think in the long run, it's going to benefit the city one way or the other.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments? All right, that being said, Mr. City Clerk, I would formally call to order the regular Lackawanna City Council meeting for this Monday, July 12th, 2021. To order, please call the roll.
Absolutely, Mr. Council President, Ingram.
Here.
Samansky, here. Moretti.
Here.
Surley.
Here.
Aron, here. Department Heads Law.
Here.
Development.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Comptroller.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Public Information.
Here.
May I have that sheet, please, Mr. Stanton, regarding anybody that may have signed in? Just to remind it, everybody, this is being broadcast via Zoom, thereby the meeting is being recorded, as per usual. Hearings from citizens, start the meeting. Mr. Van Center?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I have an apartment, a garage apartment, and I had tenants in there. Well, they moved out in 19, and couldn't do nothing last year, and I'd like to get this garbage tax taken off, because it was trashed. The apartment was trashed, I brought it in the small claims court, Gary didn't give me nothing, and I can take this, and as long as I'm living, I'll never have another tenant in there. I would like to have the garbage tax taken off, and Tony, if you can come and get the garbage can, it's in the garage, I know the other number. I have two.
You need to come up to my office and fill out an affidavit saying that you're not renting that property out?
I will.
And then, then the inspectors will come in and inspect it, and then it's all sent down to.
They come and inspect it, they'll, they'll see the same thing I see.
Well, I'll just explain how it processes, that's all.
Yeah. I'll be in, tomorrow I can't, how about Wednesday?
Sure.
What's the address of that property?
18:00. Tony knows. I'll be there Wednesday or Thursday. Wednesday, it used to be Wednesday.
Come on up, Bruce and Coffee.
Okay.
Before, before noon, Wednesday morning.
Hey, I'm retired, Tony.
That's why, you got time, Bruce.
Yeah, I know, there's no cash, you know, the government ain't throwing that extra money at us. Okay? I'll get you.
Yes, the donuts are out, too, then.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I asked, that's all I wanted to get it off, and like I says, as long as I'm alive, there'll be nobody in there no more. Because it's going to cost almost six grand to fix it. I had a frazer's, a new floor, this was a tile floor, like somebody just threw the boxes on the floor and laid it in this way, and everything, so, goodbye. Goodbye to bad gob, twelve, that's all I can say.
All right.
I'll be in there Wednesday, see you.
Very good. All right, we have the approval of the Minister of the Regular Meeting of June 7th, 2021, and June 28th, 2021.
We're going to move to adopt both sets of minutes as written.
Motion by Marana, second by Surley, to adopt both sets of minutes, can't even speak, minutes as written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Moretti.
Yes.
Surley.
Yes.
Aron.
Yes.
Harry 50, department reports one through five.
Marana, who is receiving file departmental reports one through five.
All right, second.
Motion by Marana, second by Moretti, receiving file departmental reports one through five. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Moretti.
Yes.
Surley.
Yes.
Aron.
Yes.
Harry 50, Communications from Department Division Heads, number six, city comptroller request city council review and approve the attached standard workday resolution IRS Form 2418, and in addition, IRS 2417A, that was filled out by Councilmember Samansky, Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number seven, DPW Commissioner requests city council approve County Line Stone, who has been selected from the county bid list to mill page and strike Ridge Road on the contingency of the city attorney approving contract. The cost of this project is eight hundred thousand dollars. See attached for planning the straight of Ridge Road.
Marano moves to approve request.
All right, second.
Other question, is it eight hundred or eight hundred and fifty?
It's my understanding it's eight hundred and fifty.
Do we have to change that?
You should.
Make a motion.
You've given me authority.
Second. Motion to amend to make the number eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
The letter's eight hundred. Yeah, the change came late Friday and that's when I talked to Carolyn and Rick about it. They wanted to bring it up at the meeting today.
Okay.
So originally, the original motion before Councilman Surly asked the question was a motion by Marano, second by Marady. Are you changing that or leaving that as a?
No, we're making a motion to amend.
Right, I understand that, but are we leaving the same two?
It's fine with me.
Because I know you can change it at some point too, so. All right, so what we have is a motion by Marano, second by Marady to approve the amended request, changing eight hundred thousand dollars to eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Ingram. Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number eight, DPW Commissioner requests city council approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Ford F-250 XL Supercap. The total cost is thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars, twenty-five thousand, which rises from the twenty twenty or twenty-one, twenty-two city budget. The remainder will be paid out of the Erie County Snow and Eagle Fund.
Marano moves to approve request.
Ingram, second.
Motion by Marano, second by Ingram to approve request. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number nine, I'm going to read this the way it should have been on the agenda for some reason the line got cut off. Director Recreation requests the city council approve waiving the permit fees for any food truck vendors that will be attending the two thousand twenty-one Galany Park Concert Series, including but not limited to Farm Fresh Kitchen and Barbecue. Mr. Laxo believes the presence of food trucks will enhance the enjoyment of this community event.
Marano moves to approve request, waiver only valid for this first singular event.
Second.
Again, it will be amended based on what the agenda said, so we've got a motion by Marano, second by Samansky to approve the amended request, waiver only valid for this singular event. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number ten, city attorney requests the city council approve the tax resolution, the second Victory Playground street number.
Marano moves to receive a file, I can't remember.
Second by Marano, second by Marady, receiving file, I can't resolution. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Resolution pursuant to chapter one ninety-four point seven of the Lackawanna City Code that all changes to street addresses in the city of Lackawanna are to be approved by the city council. As hereby resolved, that the land bearing sub lot number one four two point five four dash five dash one point one Victory Playground will be assigned the street number and name one fifty-four Victory Avenue, Street Victory, Lackawanna, New York.
Marano moves to adopt resolution.
All right, second. By Marano, second by Marady, the adopt resolution is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number eleven, city clerk requests the city council approve the attached resolution, rescinding resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty and reestablishing council chambers as the venue for council meetings.
But moves to amend, include new, new pro tongue, today's meeting in this resolution.
Second.
A motion by Marano, second by Samansky, receiving file, act on resolution via new pro tongue effective today. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Five zero, the resolution, extending resolution number nineteen dash twenty twenty and reestablishing council chambers as the venue for council meetings.
Marano moves to adopt resolution.
All right, second. Motion by Marano, second by Marady, adopt resolution is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Communications from citizens, number twelve, Ted Schmelz, resident, submits communication regarding the current condition of road striping on Ridge Road between Route five and South Park Avenue. Adjusted lines are faded and hard to see, especially at night, and pre-existing lines are still visible and in confusion as to the actual traveling. He requests the full attention of the council before there is a tragedy.
Marano moves to receive and file, send a communication to Mr. Schmelz.
Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Samansky, receiving file, in addition, send an email communication, follow up to Mr. Schmelz detailing plan of action. Ingram.
Here.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number thirteen, Joseph Langgo, resident, submits communication to the following concerns. Number one, Aberrode is in need of repair under both underpasses. Who is responsible for this? Number two, railroad crossing in Martin Road is in need of repairs. Number three, railroad property behind Mariner Drive from Martin Road to Smokes Creek needs to be cleaned up. There is debris in the ditch, the overgrowth of heavy brush, brush and trees is home for unlanded animals and the railroad used to clean this up. They have not seen the railroad there for about fifteen years.
We're seeing a file and contact the county, contact the railroad for their duties.
Also, we're going to direct the law department to extend the resolution to council approval. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Samansky, second by Surly, receiving file, refer to the law department to draft a resolution requesting action by the railroad.
And the company.
And the company. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number fourteen, Denise Abbott, AFL-CIO, requests the city council approve plans to utilize the tall portion of Lackawanna Sixth Street for a late day parade Monday at number six. They will start the lineup on Dorrance Avenue and into the cemetery at eleven AM. The parade will include markers, glow, marking bands, Erie County Sheriff's Monarch Patrol, welcoming local politicians and local organizations. We'll start at twelve noon and head directly into the city of Buffalo via Kimney Parkway Parade Route attached.
Marano moves to approve request, refer to director of publicity.
All right, second. Motion by Marano, second by Marady, to approve request, refer to director of public safety. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. Number fifteen, city attorney requests the city council to remove item number fifteen, tabled at the regular meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one and act on same, referring to the transfer of property located at one fourteen, one sixteen Center Street to the LHDC.
Marano moves to remove item number fifteen tabled at the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting and to act on the ordinance.
A motion by Marano, second by Marady, to remove the item number fifteen tabled at the regular meeting of June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one and act on ordinance. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky.
Yes.
Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero. The ordinance authorizing the sale transfer of property pursuant to Municipal Code Section twelve, the city council hereby approves of the transfer of property known as one fourteen, one sixteen Center Street, sub lot numbers one four two point four five dash two dash thirty-eight point one and one forty-two point four five dash three dash thirty-seven respectively to the Lackawanna Housing Development Corporation for the sum of three thousand dollars. Law department shall prepare documents to be executed for the transfer of property.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Motion by Marano, second by Ingram to adopt ordinance is written. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.
Harry five zero, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, city clerk. Any old business? Any members of the council who'd like to address this particular event?
Something that's been brought up last meeting about the left-hand turn on Lehigh. Jason, we're going to have a turning lane there, right?
On the Lehigh.
Right.
Yes, off the ridge.
Right.
Right.
They're going to be able to go around.
Yep, it'll be striped appropriately to allow for queuing on the left turn lane and then also for a through traffic on the adjacent right lane, essentially.
Right, awesome. So we have to do something about that as far as what we got to do.
Well, you have to, yeah, it's nobody's.
Left-hand turn or, I don't know, we have to. City attorneys got to write something up for the next meeting.
One of us could, yeah, one of us could. We'll write something up for the next meeting.
Awesome.
All right, anyone else? Motion to adjourn to the order?
Move the second. So I have a motion by Marano, second by Marady, to adjourn the meeting. Ingram.
Yes.
Samansky, yes. Marady.
Yes.
Surly.
Yes.
Marano.
Yes.